Hello?
Hi, it's Greg Lavell.
Hello?
We are gonna start in a moment.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back on mute.
All right. Paul Concomore on the chair of the City of Groton, calling in zoning commission. They call our meeting for July 8th, 2023 quarter at six. First item on the agenda is roll call. I am here. Ms. Bergeron is here, Ms. Carmenati is here, then Mr. Boris is here, and I will see if he has done the action from there. So I'll see Mr. Boris. There are four of us that gives us a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes from the June 21st, 123, planning and zoning commission ruling. Motion to approve. Ms. Carmenati, second, and Mr. Boris. All right, any discussion on the motion? Anybody have any changes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, right? There's a review for so. Four zero zero. All right, receiving applications is next. We have an 824 referral about state land being just given to the city, is transferred to the city, you have the right to say.
It's a release from state to state.
Okay.
It's actually not even a dollar, it's for zero. You could think, uh, at least the location doesn't report. You know somewhere outside, you got all this material. No more than a dollar.
When you get them, right? So this is, we're just receiving the application, it's partially file notice. The transaction is file number 058-035-0011. First new business item is the 824 referral. It's a, it's a state land being tracked, being registered, is it, or?
It's a, it's being removed from state, from the state.
Through the city.
To the city, or not.
So it's state land being released to the city for not more than one dollar. It's file number 058, they have 05-0011. This is for acceptance of the parcel located at North, on North Street and Bridge Street, owned by the state of Connecticut, and given at no charge to the city. Right? This is a 824 referral, so it's, um, I recommend.
So this is, this just goes to, it's a recommendation through the council.
Right. But we have to, we have to pay the action to recommend or?
Yeah, and I should tell you that there was, there's been some, um, you know, a crumple with this one. There's, normally this happens before filed on the land records, unfortunately. We were all being too efficient. So we got the plans, we agreed, knowing that we might want some of that property for rain gardens, and we ended up filing it on the land records as hours before we went through the accounting process. Name that up.
All right, and so there were, you know, so reading through the correspondence, there were some questions that we put to the state, I didn't get answers to those. I didn't see the answers in the.
The, yeah, the questions were put together based on the opinions, based on conversations within the real estate committee and question about whether the acquisition would be consistent with the P O C D since the portion of it is one of the, you can see, let me just outline on the map so you clearly understand what this is. This is the piece that we're talking about, this sort of oddly almost triangular piece. And this is the curbing. North Street goes this way, and Bridge Street goes this way. Okay, so we're talking about the corner where advanced improvements is. And one of the things, advanced improvements only goes to here. And one of the things that we have been talking about is with sort of these weird pieces of land, where can we do something that's environmentally responsible, or at least be able to give people an example, and so quite a while ago, Heidi Kommo from the highway department had talked about doing rain gardens in various places, and this is one of the places that she was thinking about doing rain, about installing a rain garden, and so that was why we were thinking it made sense, you know, there may be something else. There's, even though this was a garage, yeah, garage and a gas station. The tanks were removed, and the hole that the tanks come out of was remediated, there had been contaminants in there, but it was remediated, the fire department has the reports on that. And so they remediated to the edges of the contaminants, which was still on the advanced property, so it never got passed here. But even if it, even if anything had, nothing's being disturbed here. There's, the fact that there's asphalt over this is, qualifies as a cap. And, you know, I mean, if we ever found out that there was something terrible going on, you know, we'd need to consult experts to do, figure out what to do, because right now it meets the requirements for capping if there were a problem, and it would, and the soils that we know of were remediated. It's removed and clean, Phil was putting.
So the triangular piece at the top, that's, that's currently paved, correct?
Yes. From here, this is the curbing, so all of that is, is paved.
Right, so it's just that little slice right there, that's what the state is.
Well, it's the whole. It's the, it's the whole piece.
The whole piece, but.
Nothing's gonna change there. This is all, this was all under the state, and actually so is this, but this is the piece that we're talking about. And this is the piece that the state is looking to have released to us. They actually did release it to us. And most of it is ruled. Yeah.
Okay, but, but that, where it says the release line, below that, it still belongs, still property of the state, correct?
This is still property of the state, and we have told them we're not interested in that. The, although I believe it's on the agenda for the real estate committee meeting, but there's not, there isn't anything we can really do there right now. And they would not be willing to give it to us for nothing, or a dollar.
Okay. Any questions, problems from committees?
Did you answer that? I mean, there are reasons why you need to get that one. They do it to the, uh, they do a release of, um, properties that they, their excess properties that they don't need for anything, so they, I don't know the history on it. But I do know that this happens frequently with, um, they, they go through their properties, they wanna give it to usually adjacent property owners because it's leftover property project. Is, is the typical use.
And we have, uh, there's a memorandum from Mayor Hedrick that describes how the potential uses of the property, right? With the plan of conservation and development.
System of plan of conservation and development in that we could be using it for rain gardens or other environmentally friendly purposes. Or we may find that we need to use it for something else, but that would be determined in time and all the requirements for doing whatever that would be. The other questions? Is there any unnecessary attached liability to the acquisition? There's always liability to everything, but there's, but we did have the environmental stuff, and that would be the most seen as, I mean, like I said, they were done with reports. Do we want it? If we wanted to a rain garden at some point, do we need it? If we don't need it, but we don't want somebody else who having it either, and we would have to go, if we decided to do something like rain gardens, we would have to go through a lot of groups then to get the permission of the state and the advanced the town to put the, something with the rain garden, so it didn't seem like it was worth like if we could have control over that property, the discussion among the, those of the real estate committee. What's the, we should get the control of them. Yeah.
So just adding to another perspective, from a rezainc-y perspective, um, the rain gardens are benefiting, we're using those to help us combat stormwater runoff um, from our community rezainc-y plan, and that was our number one issue that we're trying to deal with here in the city, is what we do with the rainwater when it comes here, store it, filter it back into the system, et cetera, but the rain garden, gardens help alleviate some of that pressure, and that specific intersection seems to be a little bit of a hotspot, and it doesn't flood excessively, but it is something that the city had, like, it just is a little whole little bowl, so that, that's another reason why she, Heidi was really looking at the rain gardens in that area and see what we could do there.
The next five, it was just that we would need to do the 824, which we're giving now. And then there was a question of who would maintain the property. There's not a lot to maintain. We flower it when, we flower everything else that's ours there. Then our parks department comes to take care of the mayor's circle, they usually know that area anyway, so most of the maintenance is being done now, ready. And who pays taxes on it? We wouldn't, if we didn't acquire it, we wouldn't, the state doesn't pay us back. So there's, so there's no change, there's no change in the tax situation. That is the answer to those questions.
All right, so presumably the, you and the mayor, and we're happy with the answers, so recommendation, you need to go ahead and give a a, 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 of this. Is there any other questions or comments, or commissioners, anybody feeling differently? All right, is there a motion for a positive recommendation? I guess, I'm sorry, favorable recommendation, I think that's what the, right? A motion by Ms. Carmenati, second? Second, Mr. Boris? All right, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Favorable recommendation is approved, four zero zero. All right. The public hearing actually will come under the site plan number 495, special permit number 470, right? The kind of public hearing open on that.
I think yes.
So that'll, that'll come in under old business. So there are no other public hearings, there's no, there are no other regular meeting items. So next item on the agenda is old business. This is site plan number 495, special permit number 470. Greg Lavell, 70 Bridge Street, a new two-bedroom accommodation at that property. A public hearing was opened on April 18th, 2023. And all of us who are here tonight, who are present at that meeting, so you all in the position to be able to vote on anything that comes out of the public hearing tonight. So we're gonna, we're gonna resume that public hearing tonight, at our meeting here on July, I'm sorry, July 18th. So I'll read the public hearing procedure. I would like to continue the public hearing for special permit number 495, sorry, special permit number 470, site plan number 495. Red Lavell, 70 Bridge Street, new two-bedroom accommodation. Purpose of this hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicant, proponents, proponents and all interested parties or citizens who wish to comment on the aforementioned application. It is important to note that once this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application with any other member of the commission, the applicant, or applicant's agent, member of the public, or interested party, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. This hearing is being recorded, many meeting minutes are being documented. Anyone wishing to speak shall do so from the microphone. Please state your name clearly, spelling your last name for the record, and provide your address. Please speak slowly into the microphone, then reintroduce yourself each time you speak. The commission uses the following procedure during public hearings. Each hearing will be introduced, and notice will be read. Applicant or the designated agent will present the application. The commission and staff will have the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments. The applicant, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address staff and commission questions and comments. The chair will then ask for public comments in the following order. Comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition to the application, comments that are neither in favor or opposition to the application. Any questions to the applicant, staff, or commission shall be addressed through the chair. The chair will pose a question or questions to the appropriate party or parties. Please limit public comments to how the application does or does not apply with land use regulations or the plan of conservation and development. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address public comments and questions. The commission and staff will be provided further opportunity to ask additional questions and offer further comments. These may be directed to the applicant or a member of the public who previously commented or submitted information for the record. The applicant, the members of the public, will have one opportunity to respond to commission and staff questions or comments. The commission will then decide whether to close or continue the public hearing to a future date. Once the hearing is closed, the commission is unable to hear additional comments or accept exhibits or correspondence in favor, opposition, or with a neutral position of the application. The commission will then deliberate upon the application. Deliberations will occur during a meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Deliberations will be posted on the meeting agenda, and the public is welcome to listen to the commission's discussions. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance of a regular or special meeting of the commission, and are provided on the city's website and at the city clerk's office. During deliberations, commission members will discuss the application with input from staff. The commission will take into consideration relevant testimony and information provided by the applicant and members of the public. Following deliberations, the commission will vote on the application. Vote outcomes could be to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or deny with prejudice. Are there any questions regarding these procedures before I open them, or I continue the public hearing? Anyone?
Can you just quit, um, I may have missed it, but I just want to be clear that this is for special permit 470.
Right. Special permit number 470, site plan number 495. Greg Lavell, 70 Bridge Street, new two-bedroom accommodation. All right, public hearing is continued, so do you have any, any background you want to add at this point, lovely?
Um, I did, one thing is that this, the time runs out basically at this meeting. They, the, they give continuation until this Friday, but I do not expect we will be meeting between now and Friday, so this is the last night. There've been two extensions on this, and, um, the I was hoping to meet with the applicant's architect, that did not happen, and but we did get revised drawings, which you have already sent.
Did we introduce those and then to the public hearing? Those revised drawings? Were they automatically included?
But it can't hurt to add them to its exhibits.
So we had received, it's a there's a
July 10th.
There's a there's a site plan, there's a partition, there's a, there's a layout of the, of the internal on spaces in the building. Including a first floor plan and a second floor plan, and those were submitted on July 10th, of, coming through, right?
Yes.
All right.
Excuse me, excuse me, do you know what, exhibit number? One.
All right, Mr. Lavell? Floor is yours.
You're on mute, sir. Mr. Lavell?
I'm here, Greg Lavell's on.
Great, thank you.
Okay. You have the floor.
Okay. Yes, so I own 70 Bridge Street, I bought it as an office, and I am And I am using it as an office, but I live in Worcester, Massachusetts. And one of the, um, the benefits of the building was that it allowed for having an apartment for a. Um, I don't have it in front of me, the terminology, but the code allowed for some type of accommodation. Uh, so that I didn't have to rent a hotel room when I came down to meet with clients. And so that's what the intent is of the back of the office, is to make that into, um, a two-bedroom apartment. And so, um, I had, have an architect, and they drew up the plans. And so the goal now is to get approval to be able to proceed.
Thank you.
And I know that the last, the last time we met, um, there were some questions, I did have the architect revise the plans, and I did submit those to you.
Yes, we have, we introduce those as an exhibit to the, for the public hearing. Um, I think the, uh, the, the questions, as I recall, mostly they revolved around the parking plan. And what the interior, um, uh, layout was going to be, was not clear from the last set of drawings. Uh, I think, um, and, and I think we wanted to have, uh, some of the rooms mentioned as well, that was the other, the other thing. Um, so, wasn't he have any comments on what was, what was submitted?
A couple of immediate comments, one is, I'm concerned about parking space number seven, and I'm a little concerned about parking space number three.
Yes, and I know, yes, and I know that you had concerns previously. Uh, we did, I actually had the architect draw, or, uh, draw in, um, spaces. However, I, I have somebody that measured each of the spaces. And now there are three legal-sized spaces in front of where that loading dock was. Uh, or it's still a loading dock, but I'm not using it as a loading dock, but there are three spaces, not two. And then the additional spaces in the front of the building and to the right is actually, I believe it's nine spaces altogether.
Okay, I, my. I don't have drawings for us of that, do you?
I'm sorry?
You have drawings?
Oh, it, it, it shows, it shows, right, it shows two spaces, one and two, but when it was measured out, there's actually three there now. And because there are.
You have drawings showing that it. That it can accommodate three.
The drawing shows two, but in actuality, it is three, and I can get this redrawn to show you the proper dimensions of the three. That, that are available in front of that loading dock.
So that's actually, the number of spaces is actually not my immediate issue with this. I'll go with parking space number seven first. Generally speaking, um, it's not good practice to have parking spaces. Set up so that one parking, one car could end up backing into another car that's backing up at the same time. Those, and I actually would strongly recommend that the commission vote to get rid of parking space number seven. So eliminate that. The other thing is usually. With regard to parking space number three. The, where you have that sort of peninsula on the left-hand side of the parking space. The fact that it doesn't come out fully, and that there's, there are no dimensions showing how far that. The curb to curb, what that distance is. I'm concerned about that, too. There are measurements on this drawing, but I, I'm not, it's too small to be the scale for it to be. For me or any of the commissioner.
Understood, and I cleared all brush out of that, uh, that medium there, uh, to allow for visibility between parking spaces one, two, three, four, five. So there's no, no trees or brush in the way. I do understand what you're saying, and I can get you the dimensions, uh, and we could certainly eliminate number seven. But as I said in my previous, in the previous meeting. This building is strictly for me only, meeting with clients one-on-one. And the only vehicles that will be in this lot are my vehicle and the client's vehicle. So two, unless there's, there's a hu, a spouse that brings their own vehicle, three at the most. This is not a building that's going to have vehicles in and out twenty-four, seven. They're meeting at certain times of the day when I'm there, pre-arranged appointments. And so I do understand your concern, if it was a type of building that was like a seven-eleven. But this is a space that is for me to meet with clients one-on-one.
So again, a couple of things, one is that you have, you're showing two bedrooms, which means you need a minimum of two parking spaces for that dwelling unit. And then it's additive, so it's the, those two plus the number of spaces you would need for the office. Uh, and depending upon what the use is, if it, uh, how many spaces would need for that. And I, I may have just been missing it, although I did look for it, uh, but I still don't see a. Parking table. That shows what, what kind of office, you know, what it's being used for, but also. I'm. And, and then further, the commission is not allowed to. Put as a condition of approval that you are the only one who can occupy the dwelling unit.
That's fine, I do understand your concern, and I can certainly have the architect rework this. So that all the dimensions of the parking space are visible. Um, and does it make a difference if. I am one that's using the office with a client, and I am also the person that. Is occupying the apartment, so it's my vehicle for both purposes.
Logic would suggest that it should make a difference, um. Zoning regulations unfortunately are not logical. I'll just leave it at that, the answer to your question is no, it doesn't make a difference, I'm afraid.
Okay. What would you?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir. No, I guess my question is, at this point, what would you like to see? Um, I, I know, I know you want the, um, the measurements of the entire parking area. Uh, as well as the measurements of each space, which, uh, one and two is really going to be one, two, and three for. Um, dimensional purposes that fit that space. In addition to that, what else can I provide for you for our next meeting?
There, where, there is no next meeting on this application.
So, but the regulations for office space come up for four spaces per thousand square feet, right? And the office area has.
Twelve hundreds.
Twelve hundred and twenty, twelve twenty.
And so, that is.
So, are you saying that? Yeah, no, I, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, is, let me, let me, let me just. Let me make sure I. So the room above the office. Um, is being considered as part of the apartment. If the room above the office was also office space, which is easily a conference room. With, you know, conference tables and things of that nature. And there is a wall and a door that separates the office space to the residential unit. Then therefore, the office space would be much larger than the residential space, would that?
That makes it worse for you.
I'm sorry?
Makes it worse for you, because then you add, basically you add the twelve hundred and twenty. Um, square feet of the office space downstairs, plus the same amount we are, or close to the same amount upstairs. So that gives you a requirement of more than eight spaces just for that, plus the two. That your apartment space can't be more than, we can't require more than two spaces.
So I guess.
Agreed, but I, I think there was a question about square footage. Um, between what the office needs to be versus what the apartment needs to be. And I'm trying to let you know, I mean, I'm willing to decrease the size of the apartment, or I, I guess I just need to know what the parameters, what, what. What it needs to be, and I can make that happen.
So, so, I guess, but by my. My understanding of the regulation would be, the apartment requires two, because it is two bedrooms, regardless of how many square feet are in the apartment. Correct? And the office space would require four spaces per thousand square feet, there's. One thousand, twenty square feet, so there would be basically four point nine spaces for the office.
Got it, okay.
Two, if it's both floors.
But it's, but right now.
Right.
Yep.
Way, way it's currently designed, the second floor of the office is part of the dwelling, correct?
That's the way it's drawn, but it can be changed, yeah, but I, I, I understand what you're saying. So the, if it's a bigger office, it needs more parking spaces.
Right, so, 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 but, so I guess by our calculation here, it would need seven spaces, right?
That's the minimum number, I believe.
That's, that's based on the, based on the regs, it needs seven. If you have three in front of the loading dock, plus the four you show in front of the building, you've got seven. Without the. Just currently labeled seven, is unadvisable from your perspective. So, so I, I think, I think you have enough, I think you have enough spaces, we just need a drawing that. Shows them and is generally required conventions on the spaces for those drawings, or at least a note that states what those. Also a requirement.
Yeah, because you've still got to go to the building department. For permits to build this apartment, and we need to make sure that what he's building. Works with what's been approved.
Good.
I mean, we don't care about the, you know, the walls, they're built with two-by-sixes, which are important. But.
So, I think I'm hearing you say that I, my architect will draw in the exact dimensions of each parking space. Um, and I resubmit that?
It isn't just the parking space, it's the, it's the site dimensions that are going to show that. The, the drawing that's there is not. It may be to scale, but it's not scalable, I know that is, sounds like a terrible sentence, um, but. They may actually, I, I'm not doubting your word, it's just that I don't have any way of measuring to see if two cars can get past each other, if we need to. Require a one-way arrow for how cars come in, if that area is wide enough. Where the parking spaces are and the curb.
Yeah.
That curb, um, I'm, I'm.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent, I can easily put arrows, uh, painted on the driveway that have the cars coming in. From Bridge Street, um, and exiting.
I know that you need them, and I don't want to have you do something that's not necessary and that people will ignore because of logic. Um, you know, if there's that much space, um. Would like to see those three spaces. I mean, this is the problem with not having scaled drawings, I can look at it and say. One, it looks like they're kind of the same size as four and five, but it, at this scale. I, I have no way of being able to, um, confirm that.
I can have scaled drawings sent to you, um, within a couple of days. I, I apologize that it's not indicated, um, the size of each space. I do know that, uh, each space is, is a legal, a size space, but I will get those drawings to you. I just feel. You know, that this is something that's, um. Asking for your approval on, I just need to know what I can provide to you to get that accomplished.
Yeah, this is why I wanted to meet with your architect.
Well, I can arrange that as well. I can have him come with me to your office, if you like. He's just not available today.
After this meeting, I'm not available today either.
So, so we've got, we've got the parking questions still out there, right?
Mm-hmm.
The, the interior design, that, that makes sense to everybody now, anybody? Any other questions or comments, commissioners on the parking issue? Anybody?
Are we able to do a conditional approval, if, as long as?
I was going to ask this, too.
Well, that, well.
In order to not, uh, burden the, I know the timeline's running out, is that something that's feasible for?
In other words, approved subject to receive an acceptable parking plan.
Scale, appropriate scaled site plan with parking.
And trash location.
Right, well, that was, so that was, you know, that was the other thing, it was, it was parking, there was the drawing, and then there was the tr- trash location, right? That's.
Mm-hmm.
That's not shown either on the plan, correct?
It's, it's not shown, but it is over to the right where the new entry would be. Um, it's in the back of the building on the right, because there actually is a street that goes back. And, uh, the neighbor has his trash there as well, so the trash receptacle would be there. But I'll, I'll get that drawn in.
Anything else missing, missing, Leslie?
The problem is, I'm not sure, I can't, I don't know, I can't, I don't, I can't answer that question, and, um. One of my concerns is, had a conversation with the building official earlier this week. Is that this application is actually being filed as a way to, um. Rectify a building violation. And so I. Most of the time when I see applications come in, and I look at drawings. And I pretty quickly, you know, read drawings pretty quickly, and I can get a feel for what's there. There's, you know, a certain, like, again, I'm not, I don't know if it's because. Issues we had with the last set of drawings, when we had areas of the apartment that you couldn't get into or get out of. I don't have that feel right now and I'm concerned about it. Um, it would be a lot easier and more comfortable if we could in fact say that it keep, that the owner was the only one of the usable, what would be.
So you have my word. I've been in business twenty-eight years. If I could get a conditional approval, I will provide to you every detail that you will want on this. We talked about what is required here. I will make sure that you get what you need for, um, for the final approval. But if I can get a conditional approval so I can speak to the architect and get the additional drawing, um, done and submitted to you, that would be fantastic.
So the only open thing that at this point is from,
it's showing the part, the, the scale of the area so that you can actually that the, that how its dimension is actually correct. It's that bad experiences for people switched out drawings and people. I mean, it's, that's the one, you know, my caution comes from, there's not anything that we can point to that says, yes, we should approve something that said that these parking spaces are mentioned properly, they're in the proper place, they are, um, you know, the asphalt isn't good enough condition, the paving. And any painting would not impinge on the size of the parking areas. Showing whatever crashes. Is your trash gonna be a dumpster or is it gonna be toders?
It'll be, so there's not a lot of waste. I mean, it's an office, um, and it's just going to be a, a, a company that I hired that will have a recycle, um, you know, been there, um, that will be picking that up every week. Um, so there will be no trash on the property, I can promise you that.
The problem is that all of this aren't enforceable. I mean, this is, I, I know I'm coming off as a really awful person here. I recognize that. It is not like, not comfortable.
No, I, I wanna, I want you to feel comfortable. I, I want you, if you tell me that it's, it has to be, um, I'm, I'm not in the trash business, I don't know the types of trash, but if you tell me what it needs to be, that's what it will be. And I will get it drawn in on the, on the, on the, I'll have the architect just draw it right on the plan.
We're concerned about what it would be. Is it going to be, are you going to have, you know, is it gonna be on a route with a large trash pickup? And is that what it's, you know, how are they gonna?
Oh, no. No, no, it's, uh, no, it's just private service that I hired for, for trash. And, um, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of trucks coming in and out for pickup trash. Um, it's just, no one else is occupying the building. No one else is, uh, you know, using the office at all. It's just myself.
So can we, can we, we're given a, could, could we give an, uh, could we give an approval with the condition that, uh, that the applicant will provide a scaled site plan showing mentions, location and dimensions. It says location of trash receptacles to the satisfaction of the city planner?
Absolutely.
How were you to?
I mean, yes, you can do that and then they, um, I mean, you won't, if you don't get past me, you don't get, even get to the building department.
Right, that's, you have to work separate, whatever, whatever the plan is, you know, we're.
Oh, yeah.
But we still had to go through you before I went to the building, right, with the building department, so.
It would have to be to the, to your, to be satisfied with, that it met the regulations encompassed all the things that we've discussed tonight and at the earlier point here. So, you want to go work?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Uh, well, I give on the landscaping plan too. We can add that to. Okay.
And any, uh, any exterior lighting shown and the?
Mm-hmm. There is, there is exterior lighting and I will make sure that is shown on the next drawing.
In that, this is, because extension goes to Friday. We have to ask some of the reasons about that, the, um, information to be provided by the, maybe. I mean, I'd like to start counting on it since it's not, you know, extended till the next month. I mean, next month it won't really not, that's.
The application's good, right?
We, I mean, normally we, you don't have to make actions. Either approve or approve the conditions or deny it. Or, right, and if we don't, if we don't do, or we don't take any action, the application just comes away on, right, it expires on the twenty-first, correct? That's the.
You would have to.
Uh, on the twenty-first of July?
Yes. Okay, so we have to act, so we have to, so we have to either deny, approve or approve the conditions, deny, right? Because this is gonna be our last meeting before the application expires, right? So we can, you know, this, my, my feeling is to approve the conditions so we can keep the ball, keep the thing moving forward rather than otherwise, we're gonna have to deny it. We, I don't think we're gonna approve it about.
Putting conditions.
Putting conditions on it because there's some things missing. But we've talked about it, um, and if you're comfortable with it, conditions that would, say, with a scaled site plan showing the dimensions, um, location, dimensions of the parking spaces, location of trash receptacles.
The landscaping.
Uh, and, um, exterior lighting and landscaping. So then, those little things you like that, that you, that you need. And to the, to, to meet the satisfaction of the city. That, that wording, make you comfortable. So, I mean, it seems.
Seems reasonable, yeah.
So it gives the applicant the opportunity to comply.
But at the same time, enables us to make sure that things are going the way they're supposed to go at the end.
Yeah. And, okay, so.
But if they don't, it just doesn't.
What kind of, Mr. Lavell, what kind of a date?
What's a reasonable time that your architect?
I'm gonna contact the architect, uh, tonight and I will find out from him. I don't know if he's even around, but, uh, what is the, what, you tell me what date needs to, and I, I will, uh, I'll find a way to get this to you.
And so it's, it's seventeen, so what have we said, uh? So the last Friday in July is twenty-seventh?
I need to look it up.
Yeah.
So by the twenty-eighth?
Um, yeah, but I said by July twenty-eighth, that's, that's ten days.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, today's the eighteenth, so, uh,
So we come this Friday?
Yeah, all right. That's, uh, works.
I mean, if your architect or of your architect come in to see me, uh, sooner rather than later, I think that might help make sure we get.
Excellent.
It would, it would be more efficient for everybody if that would occur, then.
Yes, we will come in together with the revised plans so that we can both answer questions that you may have. But I will get working on this immediately if, uh, if we have a conditional approval.
Yeah, I think you may want to note on the record that if all of this is not in meeting with approval here by the twenty-eighth, it is denied. Because we have legal things we have to do.
Mm-hmm.
We need to close.
Okay.
Because nobody has a tendency to speak.
Right, we have to, we have to, we're closing the public hearing tonight. We're gonna have this discussion again as part of our deliberation, right, in the side of it.
You could just make the motion.
Just, right, once we have to close the public hearing. Um, okay. Anybody, anybody else have anything you want to say as part of the public hearing? So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna ask if there's any public comments. There's nobody here in, in the room, is there anybody? Anybody on the Zoom calls here? Mr. Lavell? Oh, all right, so there's nobody on Zoom call, so there's no.
I'm the only one.
No comments from the public, just to keep that in their record. Um, so is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion from Ms. Carmenati. Second. Second from Ms. Bergeron. And for the discussion on the motion, there are none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, extensions, so vote to close the public hearing as four zero zero. All right, now let's, now we're gonna do our deliberation here. We did, we did a discussion during the public hearing about it. So, yes, there's a motion to approve with the conditions that, uh, the applicant submit a scaled site plan showing dimensions, the location of dimensions of the parking spaces, the location of the trash receptacles, um, exterior lighting and landscaping plan. And all those to the satisfaction of the city planner no later than July twenty-eighth. If, and if we, is that another, is it, the condition is also that if acceptable plans aren't rec, aren't received by the city planner by July twenty-eighth, then the application will be considered denied. Is that correct?
That is what I will achieve.
Okay, um, wants to make that motion. This Carmenati.
You said it off.
It's the second. Second from Ms. Bergeron.
Have a condition? Have a conditional approval then, correct?
Once we vote on it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, to approve with the conditions that be, that we have a, a scaled site plan showing all dimensions, location in, in dimensions of parking spaces, location of the trash receptacles, along with an exterior lighting plan and landscaping plan that alter the satisfaction of the city planner. For those who receive no later than July twenty-eighth, they are not received, the application will be considered denied. That's the motion. All right, motions from Ms., made by Ms. Carmenati, seconded by Ms. Bergeron. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, all right, that is approved for zero zero. All right, thank you, Mr. Lavell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
See you now.
Yes.
Thank you, and I will make an appointment to come in and see you. I'll, I'll talk to Danny and we'll get that, uh, scheduled.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay.
Yeah, bye-bye.
I was standing a little nervous. You can't bowl, this is important.
All right, any, any under report of commission? And commissioners have anything? Ms. Bergeron?
I would just like to mention, I don't know if anybody knows here, oh, in the, about, um, New London turning the corner. And it refers to, a lot of big important real estate has been controlled all that time, years that they've been looking to turn New London around. And that different things that have been done to the downtown areas have made it a better city for people to go. But he said he must give the current city hall a consideration credit. Keeping his shoulder to the wheel, some of the recent cosmetic improvements, they've been trench control and new lighting. It made it, and that most important decoration of New Haven with several big projects just finished or underway, it seems to be finding creating new life in the downtown. Just the work, the site of work being done downtown is inspiring. Improvement, yes, improvement. And that said, New London has won the redevelopment lottery with this hiring trajectory at the Democratic vote. And after reading that, it just makes me think, Grunden City should participate in this lottery. And I just wanted people to know how important it is that Grunden City also take advantage of this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, you know, and, and I, I totally agree with that. I think we've taken a step in the right direction with the West End project.
Yes.
So, yeah. That's, it's, it's gonna sound weird. Um, and, and speaking of that, um, were you happy with the, all the, all the changes that, that were, that, that the whole site development proposed and that they had their answers?
Oh, y'all wouldn't know if that was.
So you were good with all the SLR? They have an opinion about the, the responses that they?
No, it was all, we're all good.
Everybody's, everybody's happy.
Drawings have been signed and, um, it's all good.
Okay, so we're.
Took two years, but.
The eyes done, the teeth crossed.
But it happened in the right place.
Yeah.
Get forward to city, keep in credit. Just have to walk out of that door. Light up the, uh, utility access placement. Check on.
All right, any public communications? All right, um, reporter staff, anything?
I had a really great vacation.
We can see the difference.
All right, anything?
Um.
From your perspective?
No update for this meeting, but just reminder that City Day is August fourth, um, this year. Leslie and I will be out there, or all parties will be out there, but we'll have a display of some products that we're working on and. some projects that we're working on and and then with the July, the next town that's coming up at the end of this month will be giving an update to the council on the Bridge Street Gateway project and how that's going.
All right, Leslie just passed out some.
We don't have to discuss it tonight. Take a look at it. I don't like, it's just a few, you didn't pay for a home board, you're about to do it. Right. So this is I literally, what's underlined is new, what's, but has a straight through, it was old, so what's the language, the same as is from most of this is from Paul, and I think are very good suggestions. It's a way to get the changes into the GC zone sort of rather than there without this one.
Well, it's, it's, it's a lesson, it's a less involved approach to making the changes in the general commercial rates. Lo- Leslie and I have been in the line to kind of talk, come on ideas about how we might, how we might get there because there are so many things going on with trying, trying to get in the, by those, those, those regulations that we're working on called the
Smart Code.
There's a, there are a lot of changes in there and it's kind of a lot to wait for. But this has been a, a proposed approach that we might want to get, that was, you know, had make, make the most important changes more quickly while we work to develop the whole smart code approach to the regulations.
Yeah.
At the same, so this is a take a look and we can, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and come up in August.
Great.
That would be good.
Yes.
That's all right.
One thing just, just a note. Figuring it, it's, I don't, I, I may have said this before, but I don't like putting stories as the metric because then you have to define what a story is and first stories are usually higher than subsequent stories. And so the typical numbers that are used that accommodate heating, air conditioning and structure of buildings, you can hold up the floor above you is um or in floor to floor, finished floor to finished floor is usually fourteen feet on the first floor and then twelve feet on the floors above that. So for up to four stories would be thirty-six plus fourteen. So that's why it says fifty feet, the other one says seventy. The math is right, that's. So that's why it uses feet. It, it mentions stories also. The feet can be.
It makes more sense to use feet than the, than the text, you can do that too.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a line.
Okay, um, I, you should keep that on to everybody else too.
Yeah.
Okay, next, but then I was, that was this, this one came out of an offline discussion that's in my head about looking for a a uh I guess it less involved way than anything else for our staff?
City day is August fourth.
Right, yep. Um, no executive session, so motion to adjourn. All right, to second? Second from Mr. Boris. I'll beat you to it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Someone else are standing, three hours adjourned at seven forty-five. Thanks, everyone.